Get in the jail, we can't afford it, so we just gotta pause Derek.
This is for all law enforcement. How does law enforcement handle domestic violence situations?
Come on, roll. Yeah, sure. When a law enforcement officer goes to a domestic violence call, okay, the first thing you gotta try to do is figure out who the aggressor is. Okay, sometimes you can do that, sometimes you can't. If there is a, if you see bodily injury, you shall arrest. That's what the state law says, you shall arrest. It doesn't say they, you shall arrest, okay? And then there, then you can call and get a advocate on the phone with the victim and go that route. But you're, somebody's gonna get arrested if you can figure out who the primary aggressor is. I don't know, you got seventy-two hours to arrest somebody. So like if I go to your house and your wife's got some bruises, or your husband, women can do it. And you're not, your aggressor isn't there, we've got seventy-two hours to find him and arrest him based off that. If not, we gotta get us a warrant. Unfortunately, most of the time, the victims change their mind, bail them out before we can do anything, or decide, I love him, I'm not filing charges now.
Prosecuting DV, domestic violence, is one of the toughest things we do. It's what's called a predicate offense, which means the first offense is typically misdemeanor. Follow-on offenses can be charged as a felony. But the first thing I need everybody to understand is that domestic violence is complicated, and it's very complicated for the victims. You know, they may have just gotten beat up, but that's also their spouse, or their boyfriend, or their girlfriend. Uh, that is the household income, or a big part of it. That's the kid's parent. It's complicated. We try and sort out the domestic violence between people that are, you know, very often you have good people that are having a bad day and went too far. And it's really a singular act of an assault and battery in a domestic situation. And then we've got some people that are just, we call them batterers, and they use violence and intimidation as a way to get what they want from their partner on a regular basis. We're really targeting batterers. Very often the cases that we get, we can only prosecute them with the assistance of the victim. We try whenever we can, and so does law enforcement, to get other evidence, other corroboration, statements against interest made by the perpetrator. But a lot of times, we're left with someone, one of them has to testify against the other, and again, it's complicated for them. You know, we know from working these domestic violence cases that even in severely abusive relationships, it's more common than not that the abused person has left and returned seven, eight, nine times before they finally break off the relationship. And there's some relationships where we've seen where it's happened a lot more than that. You can't look the other way. You gotta report it, please report it. And one of the things that's really helpful is whenever there's somebody who is not part of that couple, who says, "I saw them fighting out front. He was beating her down, and she was screaming for help." You think I can win that case? I can win that case. But people have to be involved, and you have to pay attention. It's always gonna be with us, but we can do better at how we handle it and how we prosecute it.
So that was the last question that we have that was sent in to us. Now we will appropriately line up in a nice little fashion.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I wanna go through something real quick. I wanna, I wanna give you the timeline of the Ellis incident, okay? How many here heard that Mr. Ellis cried in pain for days? Anybody? Okay, that's a key type of misinformation. I wanna give you the timeline of what happened when Mr. Ellis was in custody, okay? That way everybody understands what's going on. I just spent a week and a half sitting in this trial, listening, watching video, and all that, right? So on ten seventeen, Mr. Ellis was already in jail. It was a Saturday, he complained about his back hurting. And he said that his back was broken and that from sleeping on the bunks. So it was Saturday, so the nurses called and said to give him some pain reliever, liver, pain reliever, and to lie down, and that she would see him on Monday. So Monday rolls around, the nurse sees him. Um, he's just complaining about his back problem, and he's, he's, he's kinda pointing to one certain area on his back. And so she made a diagnosis, but she ain't supposed to have an LPN, but hey, she said that he gotta, he gotta rip out. Gave him some Tylenol, singing back into it, that was on the nineteenth. Nothing was hurt from Mr. Ellis until the twenty-first. On the twenty-first is when the ambulance was called. Prior to that, Mr. Ellis is seen on video walking around the pot, going to the restroom, and all that stuff. So he goes up to the door, and one of the jailers says, when he's at the door, he is complaining because he can't see or call his grandpa, and that if we're not gonna let him call his grandpa, that he's gonna see the county. The jailer says, "I can't let you call your grandpa, there's a phone in the pot." So he walks over to his bunk, you can see this on video. He walks over to his bunk, and a couple minutes later, the inmates are yelling for staff because he's having a seizure. So staff goes in there, an ambulance is called, medical shows up. Uh, he's coherent, talking to them, they take his vitals, everything but the O2. Uh, he's talking with them, they don't find nothing emerging with him. He's sitting there with his, uh, blood pressure cuff on, and he goes, "Hey, can I use one of your guys' phone to call my grandpa?" And they all said no. At that time, he gets upset, he throws his, uh, blood pressure cuff off and said, "To hell with you, take me to my cell." So everybody leaves. Mr. Ellis is seen then walking to H1. There's two holding cells down there, H1 and H2. H2 has a sink and a toilet in it, H1 has nothing in it, except for the famous D-ring. They lay him in H1. Why? Nobody can tell us why. They just picked H1. It wasn't nothing special, they just picked H1. So they take him in there, and he lays down on the bunk, and I don't know exactly when, uh, what, what time this was, but they put him on a fifteen-minute medical watch. So this is later in the evening, so during the evening, late into the night, he starts complaining that his legs are hurting and that he can't move. Well, you see him on tape getting up and walking from the holding cell to the bathroom with a cup of water, with a cup. So he does that three different times through the evening and into the night. So the nurses called and said, "Hey, he's complaining about his legs hurting." She says, "Keep an eye on him. Uh, note whether he's walking or not, I'll see him in the morning." Roger that. So he goes through one shift, he's walked twice. The midnight shift starts, that's passed on to him, and he is seen walking one more time during the midnight shift. And that was around three o'clock in the morning. The times are gonna be approximate, all right, I don't have the exact times in front of me. So between that time and about five-thirty in the morning, you don't hear nothing from him at all. Uh, about five-thirty in the morning, he starts talking to an inmate who's in one of the other holding cells, talking about a guy that got tased in the face on an arrest. He ain't saying nothing, he don't sound like he's in any type of distress or anything like that. So he's talking with the inmate, and during the night, the nurses called again. She said she'll see him in the morning, all right? So what he's saying about him not feeling his legs, not being able to walk, is contradicting what they're seeing, okay? So if, if you've got an inmate telling you, "Hey, I can't feel my legs, I can't walk," but he's getting up and he's walking to the bathroom, you kinda got away with what's going on, all right? But they called the nurse, okay? About eight in the morning is when stuff starts going downhill pretty quick. The day shift comes in, he starts really complaining bad about his legs. Uh, about they're black, they're hurting, it, it's, it's bad. Two jailers walk over there and say, "Hey, nurse will see you when you get here, you're fine, blah, blah, blah." Okay? That's when he really starts yelling. It's about between eight, eight-thirty in the morning, he starts yelling for help, all right? At this point, it's sad. He starts yelling, screaming for help, and this goes on for quite a while. So throughout the night, nothing, starts yelling, screaming about eight o'clock. He's, uh, waiting on the nurse. Should somebody have called an ambulance? You damn right they should've, okay? But they didn't, because they was listening to the nurse. So about ten-thirty, somebody decides to show up to work. That's the nurse, ten-thirty in the morning. So between eight o'clock and the time that she starts to go to work, you have inmates listening to him, screaming for help. You've got the cook listening to him, screaming for help. You've got the jailer sitting there, listening to him, screaming for help, and nobody calls a freaking ambulance for this kid. Ten-thirty, she rolls around, she finally shows up at work with a cup in her, never mind. So she don't go straight to him. It's all on video. She don't go straight to him. So he's out there yelling. So the jailer and the nurse finally go over to, to H1, to the door. Open up the door, and that's where that famous delittling happens. Don't check on him, just belittles him. Just sad. Starts, uh, threatening to put him on a D-ring. If you don't know what a D-ring is, it's a, it's a round thing in the hole that if, it's not for punishment, it's for violent people, okay? Uh, if, if you've got somebody that's, that's beating on somebody, that's totally out of control, you put them on a D-ring. It's a, it's a bill on the floor, you handcuff them, they're on the floor, they can't move, all right? She's threatening to put him on this damn D-ring, sorry for French, but I get worked up every time I think about this. So at ten-thirty, when she slams that door, you don't hear nothing from him. You know why you don't hear nothing from him? Because he's afraid he's gonna get D-ringed on that floor. Nobody's checking on him. So about one, one-thirty, whatever time the ambulance is finally called, the jailer goes down there to check on him and says, "Uh, hey, you need to get up, the nurse wants to look at you." Because the jailers wanted to put him back in the pot. Mr. Ellis ain't responding. So he goes and gets the nurse, and she waddles down there, and, and finally tries to do some vitals on him, can't find none. Finds him respiratory distress, calls an ambulance. Ambulance comes, gets him. Take him out to the Sally Row, to transport him, they start doing CPR in there, end of the deal. And it was long enough to where a deputy started helping him. Deputy's doing what he can to help this guy. Well, in the meantime, watching the video, does the nurse go out to find out if anything's going on with this gentleman? Oh, hell no, all right? She starts talking about possible suicide, all right? And then she's gotta leave because she's gotta go pick up the grandkids while this guy's dying in an ambulance himself. So that's the timeline of Mr. Ellis. He wasn't screaming for help for days. He was screaming for help for about six hours, about one minute too long, okay? That happened, Mr. Ellis passed away on October fifteenth, two thousand fifteen. As soon as Derek Durbin saw, or was told that there was a death in that jail, he pulled the DVRs for the cameras. Mr. Durbin started watching video, but there was no audio. Those cameras had audio, but that system, they couldn't figure out the audio all the time. So there was no audio. So he's watching to make sure they did their fifteen-minute checks, that's what he's watching. So he found that the more he played it, it started recording over itself. So he stopped because he got a preservation letter from the lawyer, and he put in an evidence. That was on ten-twenty-two of two thousand seventeen. Nobody knew there was audio, nobody. So that's that evidence until July of two thousand seventeen. And Mr. Smolin's law firm files the tort claim in June of two thousand seventeen. So on July of two thousand seventeen, the county's attorneys come and get the DVR. So you're looking at almost two full years since he passed away until the lawsuit and all that. Nobody knew there was audio. Well, in November of two thousand seventeen, our law firm writes a letter to the sheriff at the time, just about the case, no mention of audio. So there's no audio in November of two thousand seventeen. So that's two years, one month. And December of two thousand seventeen is when the audio is found. December of two thousand seventeen, the county's law firm found it, found the audio. At that time, they hand it over to Smolin, and that's when it starts going downhill for the county. So you had two full years of nobody knowing that audio was on that camera, two full years. Well, one of the questions is, well, why can't somebody get charged for this, okay? Believe me, I want somebody to get charged for this, all right? As soon as this trial was over, me and Doug, we sat down and started looking at statutes. We found second-degree manslaughter. And I was wanting second-degree manslaughter on a nurse. We couldn't do it because the statute of limitations, at the time, is three years, okay? So the last time anybody could get charged, the last day anybody can get charged for Mr. Ellis's death, second-degree manslaughter, was October twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, okay? So from the time the audio was found till October twenty-second of two thousand eighteen, the FBI was called, all right? It was turned over to the FBI for civil rights violations, okay? People can get criminally charged for civil rights violations with the FBI. Why it didn't happen, I don't know. That's not on me, that's not on this VA, okay? A lot of people say, "Well, why did the last district attorney not file charges against the nurse?" Because he gave it to the FBI. Everybody up here that's in law enforcement understands how the government works, but when you hand it to the FBI, and you only have like five months until you can charge him, statute of limitations were out. So nobody can be charged right now for that. It's done, it's over, nobody's gonna get charged for it. Nobody, okay, everybody's saying, "Well, even after the death, you still kept him on." Yeah, nobody knew there was audio until when? December of two thousand seventeen. The nurse quit June of two thousand seventeen. All the jailers left in two thousand sixteen that was involved in this. So nobody was even still employed at the Ottawa County Sheriff's Office when the audio was found. I keep getting questions, "Well, you still got people working there that was part of the Ellis deal." There was nobody working at the Ottawa County Sheriff's Office right now that was part of that lawsuit. Nobody. There was one jailer that worked that midnight shift, it's a deputy now, with the Ottawa County Sheriff's Office. But he wasn't involved in the lawsuit, and he was administering, administrative action was taken against him in two thousand fifteen. That's the Ellis timeframe. It's sad what happened. I'm telling you, if I had to sit there as a kid, or as a parent, listening to that about my kid, I'd go nuts. But that's the Ellis timeframe. So he didn't sit there for days screaming for help, it was about six hours worth. You have one person responsible for that, and we can't charge him. So that's where the Ellis case is. Now, I wanna also bring up a TikTok video, because I know it's gonna get asked, about a blonde lady that was arrested at a marijuana grow last week, okay? This office had nothing to do with that marijuana grow arrest, nothing whatsoever. We just housed him, okay? She's complaining that she gets to the county jail and she didn't get her two phone calls. That's absolutely correct, because there were several people getting booked in at that time, and she was put in the pot. Well, in the pot, you have twenty-four-hour access to phones, all right? The jailer should've gave her a phone call. Didn't happen. But she didn't wait forty-eight hours to get a phone call. I've got it on tape, she was on the phone, making a phone call herself within twenty-four hours. Another thing that she's saying is that she didn't get to see a judge for forty-eight hours. That's a lie, folks, that's complete hogwash. She saw a judge the next day. You have forty-eight hours to do an arraignment, all right? She saw a judge within twenty-four. The PCs weren't in. So she stayed in jail until the next arraignment date, which was Friday. And then she saw the judge again, and she got her bond set, okay? I've already told you once, she didn't get a match, it was shame on me, all right? But she didn't get her two phone calls, shame on me. But she was able to make phone calls, she's got twenty-four-hour access to phone calls in her pot, and she was able to see a judge within that timeframe that she's supposed to be able to see a judge. So I wanna clear that TikTok thing up. I'm so sick of social media, I've worked more working on social media than what I'm supposed to do for you all. And I'm sick of it. But that should clear up a lot of the Ellis questions, and that should clear up a lot of the blonde at the marijuana grow questions. Okay? I wasn't at the marijuana grow. I don't care about the marijuana grow. We busted two, I'm still trying to get land from the marijuana grow, okay? I'm still trying to get trucks and stuff, all that from marijuana grows. I couldn't care less. You people need to understand these marijuana grows, they may have the licenses, but it doesn't mean the license is legit, and it doesn't mean that they're not selling black market marijuana. It's happening every day. There you go.
Thank you very much for that. Okay, now, if we could please, for those that have questions, if you could just step up to the line into podium here, we'll get your questions asked, and we can get moving on, thank you. Yeah, just press that, and please address who you want the question answered by or the podium.
Fine. First and foremost, I want to take an opportunity to thank you for this opportunity to address my concerns as a Miami citizen.
The mic's not on.
Close, sir, can you hear me now? Did you hear me before? Bended now, how about that? Now? Now, how about now? How about now? Okay, how about now? Is that good? Okay. Again, I wanna say I appreciate the fact that you have assembled here for the Miami citizens to voice their concerns, and I want to, okay? I live at, on twenty, I, I live on F Southwest Street, okay? And I have called the police department on several occasions in reference to burned-out houses within a half a block from me. One house, which is five-fourteen First Southwest, is the corner of First and F Southwest. Uh, I called three times on that house, because there was meth people in there, cooking, doing whatever they're doing in there, homesteading, okay? I called, and, okay, we'll send somebody over, we'll send somebody over. I said, "Okay, that's good, that's why I'm calling, okay?" Well, the last time I called, the third time I called, they said, "Well, are they there now?" I said, "That's why I'm calling, they're here now, they're there now." I watched, no one came, okay? Two days later, the house, five-fourteen First Southwest, uh, First Street, burnt, burnt to ground. And the, the reason for it was because they were in there cooking. Now, how do I know that? There's been the presence of meth manufacturing so frequent in my, my two blocks that I recognize the smell, no denying it. And you know the house, five-fourteen First Southwest, corner First and F Southwest, big greenhouse, okay? The other house is thirty-G Southwest, burned out, they're living in there. The other house is two-G Southwest, it's burnt down, and they're living in there. They come and go at will, because I've watched them. Now, I am concerned for my welfare, because one of those houses is two houses down from my home. I've been so concerned that I put Rs on my windows. They can't get in there, but you know what they do? They break my windows. Now, I don't know if you record dispatch calls, but you can, if you do, you can check my walls. I am concerned about the meth issue in this town. And I'm also concerned about the fact that it was dropped down from a felony to a misdemeanor. I mean, thirty percent, I heard this figure a while ago, the city courts, the misdemeanors, has increased thirty percent. I think it's meth usage. The misdemeanor in this, in this county, this city, that deals with the manufacturing, the possession of meth and fethamines, it, it, you know, that really concerns me. Because like I said, these three houses are within, within a two-block radius of me. And one of these fires, an individual died in there, and they still go in and out. They go in and out during the night, you know, sometimes I think, well, maybe... You know, sometimes I think, well, maybe two o'clock would be a nice time to watch them. So I get up and then go in and out, in and out, in and out. And the smell permeates my block. You know? So when I call and I say, gee, you know, there's a bunch of, bunch of people living down on this house. You know, I think there really something needs to be done. I make that call expecting some kind of resolution from that call. And I'm concerned because I'm not getting that. It's a fact. Now, my other thing is the destruction of these homes. Had that mentioned earlier, okay? How would one give the list of the destruction locations and the dates? Now, I asked a couple of questions from someone, not gonna name their name. And I wanted to know what the crew number was for the city that does the destruction. They said there was three members on the destruction crew. Well, I can understand, well, you don't get a house tore down for three years. And oh, by the way, the first, the last address that I gave you, it burnt down three years ago. And I called several times. And that's where a guy got burned in there, a punk in there. My other thing is, what would a concerned Miami residents have to do to get meth back on the ballot, ballot, to change it from a misdemeanor back to a felony? How would one do that? Now, that's a couple of questions there. But petition, I'm sure there's citizens here that's concerned when would like that meth back as a felony, not a misdemeanor. That's why your city court's so busy. Now, I don't mean to be condescending, by no means. I am concerned about my welfare, my welfare since, since the bars, people. Again, come through the bars and they just break out my windows. That's a major concern for me. I have alarm system. I have a gun. I'm ex-Navy. I know how to use a weapon. And it wouldn't bother me to use it. So having said all that, whoever hasn't answered any of this, I'm gonna address them.
Let me start with the drug free issue. That is a state law. It was voted in by the people of the state of Oklahoma on state question seven eighty in two thousand seventeen. That is a statute. There are several, I was in the legislature at the time that that was done. And by the way, I spoke in every group that I could, telling everybody, this proposed state question is a horrible piece of legislation. And you're gonna regret it.
I already do.
Well, I do too. There was a, a group of us from both sides of the aisle that went to the leadership and said, you know, we got to fix some of these problems from state question seven eighty. And they said, leadership said, no, we're not gonna thwart the will of the people. What they often said is, if the people voted it in, only the people can change it. That's a bold-faced law. The legislature could change it if they had the gumption and the intestinal fortitude to do their jobs properly. But the leadership will not let it happen. We went to them and said, at least, you know, right now, I can take twenty-five pounds of marijuana into Miami public schools. You know what I'm committing?
A misdemeanor.
A misdemeanor. Right. We went to them and said, at least let us reinstate the drug-free school laws. Nope, we're not gonna let you do it. It doesn't take voters to do anything if the legislature would do their job and fix these poor, poor pieces of legislation that the voters voted in. They did it with marijuana. The marijuana law was, was even, in many ways, it was even worse than seven eighty was. But they, they didn't care about it. They didn't do anything to fix it until the other states started complaining because ninety-eight percent, that's the estimate from OBNDD, ninety-eight percent of marijuana grown in Oklahoma was illegally leaving Oklahoma and being sold in other states. It wasn't until other states started complaining that the legislature decided to do anything to fix the problems by the, by seven eighty-eight, the marijuana issue. The legislature can fix it. It doesn't take a vote of the people. They just don't have the leadership to do it.
So
But we in, in Miami, Oklahoma, can't do anything. It's the state law. We're bound by the state law.
Okay, I get that. I understand that, you know? But I understand that completely. But my thing is, do you contact the legislators? How would the normal, everyday, hard-working American get in touch with somebody other than leaving a message on their phone at their office? What, how would you, how would you suggest that someone address that issue?
I had a talk with this young lady right in front here. She does a grand job, a grand job of getting legislators to listen to her.
Okay. Well, let's do that. Alright? Now, my other thing was, the abandoned houses, which you didn't think was such an issue. I can assure you, they are. Now, how, again, how would I get a list of the homes that are on the destruction list? And an estimated time that they're going to be destroyed? Because I know if those houses were not standing in my neighborhood, those menheads would have nowhere to sleep.
Okay. Hi. We have the city department deals strictly with our code compliance. If you would give me your information, I will forward that. We'll make sure that we're, I get you in touch with code compliance.
Okay.
And they can explain how they demo houses, what they demo. I know the city spends tens of thousands of dollars a year giving houses. We can only do so many a year. And there's a long list. But they would be more than happy to reach out to you. That is a code compliance issue that they'll explain their process. This is a long course of panel, but I will be more than happy to get you in touch with them.
Okay.
So they can explain that and maybe do a better job of articulating than I can of what that procedure is.
Okay. I will, I will get with you and get that information from you. And, and the other thing is, those three houses that I gave the addresses for, they're still in and out. So if you just want to drive by, check on the house, you know, in, in a light hour.
And I got five fourteen for a second G and I missed a third one.
Okay. Five fourteen First Southwest. It's at the corner of First and F Southwest. The other one is thirty G Southwest. And the other, the other one is two G Southwest.
Right, I got those two, I'll get the other ones.
Okay. And, and the one, the thirty G Southwest, that's, that's the big two-story red brick house. They're in there all the time. They board up the windows, they just take the windows out. The board. They just knock them out, go in there. They're living there. Okay? So yes, that was Dr. Gray's house. Yeah. Yeah, they're in there all the time. And they're, and they're cooking. You know? And I'm not talking french fries.
You're well aware of that.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate your questions.
Thank you very much.
Okay, who's next, please?
My name's Sarah Taylor. I live in Oklahoma. I grew up on East Street Door West. And I remember as a child here, I, you know, we, very rarely did we have our screen door locked or anything like that. But now I'm locked inside my house. And I've got loaded weapons in there that I've never had before. And I'm living with a menopausal wife, so I'm in fear for my life. One way or another. But but, you know, to answer this lady's question about the house, I live near Washington School right now. And I've lived in the same house for thirty-six years. And I had a house located at eighteen forty-seven B Northeast. It took me thirteen years to get it tore down. And the reason they said it took so long was because it fell through the cracks. It wasn't that I didn't call. I called, believe me. But they said it fell through the cracks. And the city only allocates fifty thousand dollars a year, is what I was told. Ben Shakesman said yes, in agreement. Fifty thousand dollars a year is all that's allocated to tear down these abandoned buildings. We've got a real problem right now with the Martin Stevall School of Law. You know where I'm talking about? The poor man's all the way through.
There's nothing wrong with that.
I'm here, I'm the owner right here, so I'll talk to you about that.
Wasn't there a shooting there?
No, there was that gun into my head and the cops released the guy. They didn't bring any charges on him either.
Okay, let's keep in your order, please. Appreciate it.
But, but, you know, there's people staying in there and I believe there's people staying under the Tar Creek Bridge. And they're living under there. I've been by there in the wintertime on my way to work and seen smoke coming from under that bridge where they're starting a fire to warm themselves. I don't blame them. And I, I will say, on the jail subject, I was invited to tour the jail and I did. And it was everything that David says and more. I believe everything he's said tonight about the jail. It's, it's not even a polished tour. It ain't, it ain't halfway there. But, you know, I thought tonight we were looking for solutions. And I haven't heard any solutions. And, and this lady had a good thought about the recalling that and then Ben personally answered that. But if the legislature won't repeal that law, then we need to do something. We, I asked Doug the other day, I see Doug out sometimes. And I asked Doug the other day, who would we get to write a petition? And we can start it from here. It's gotta start somewhere. And because of our geographical location in Miami, Oklahoma, we're supposed to Missouri and Kansas and Arkansas. When we pass that law, decriminalizing meth, we invited the meth users from those neighboring states to come here and make their home because now they won't get in trouble. Yeah. But we gotta do something. We gotta get this changed. And we gotta, we gotta go back to making a felony not a thousand dollars worth of property. It, it's gotta be less than that. Because, you know, someone can break in your home and steal almost anything in your home. It's not worth a thousand dollars. I mean, a used couch, a used TV, none of that stuff's worth a thousand dollars. So, so they're not gonna get a felony for breaking in your house. I mean, unless somebody's there, probably. But, you know, we gotta do something. We gotta get started. Even if we're not right, we gotta do something. We gotta make a move. And hopefully, you know, I agree with this lady, let's get a petition started. I asked Doug the other day, who do we get to write this petition? I'm not a lawyer. And I'm sure it has to be worded right. So we need to, we need to get started and do something, even if, even if we're not doing the right thing.
I called your state representative.
And that's the first thing I would agree. Contact that state representative first.
Well, he's not gonna write it.
I'm not saying he can write. I know one of them can.
But I mean, and Ben's already said, they're, they're not gonna change things. So, I mean, we gotta approach it from a different angle, maybe.
So Darrell, if I could address some of that. If you want to go the petition route, the voters always have that option. The number of signatures you, you need is based on the last the editorial that voted the last time. Somebody needs to fix these microphones. So it would take probably about two hundred and eighty thousand signatures. And you're not gonna get two hundred and eighty thousand signatures in Miami, Oklahoma. You're also right that when we pass seven eighty, we invited all the voters from our neighboring states to come here. We've also invited all the thieves, the professional thieves, to come here. Because if they get caught back home, it's a felony. They get caught here, it's a misdemeanor. Really no consequences. And that is worse now with legislation.
A lot of that, the thieves and the voters, if you're gonna use that term, are the same people.
Alone, yeah.
You know, they're using the profits from the stealing to finance their habits, you know?
Well, just wait. Because the legislature passed a bill this year that come November first, there is nothing that's gonna be able to do, be done, at least at the misdemeanor level, against a thief or a voter.
Well,
Nothing.
Another thing on these abandoned buildings and houses, I've suggested several times, Quoipol tribe has their own immolition crew, more or less, with, with the EPA stuff that they do. They have backhoes, they have dump trucks, you know, in their possession. I've suggested several times too, that we at least talk to them and, and see if we can't work something out where they can come in here and get rid of some of these old buildings. And rid our town of some of this problem. Maybe they will, maybe they won't. But it doesn't hurt to ask them. All they can do is say no. And, and, you know, since they have the manpower and the equipment already in place, maybe they might do two or three a year as a favor to us. I don't know. But we need to get on that and, you know, try to ask them.
We, we need to address the real problems of homelessness and the lack of facilities to take care of people. The lack of assistance. We have no facilities anywhere in Miami that help or house homeless people.
You're correct. And, and the reason we don't is because there's so much liability involved. You know, everybody has what I like to call a bleeding heart. I'm gonna volunteer. I'm gonna volunteer to come help you at that homeless shelter. Well, once they figure out that you, you've just sent your wife or whoever up there and they're spending the night with a bunch of drug heads or criminals or not everybody that's homeless is in that same boat. But a lot of the problem we have here in Miami, Oklahoma, the homeless and the drug people go hand in hand. But not everybody.
That's the lack of infrastructure, a lack of, but no help in, in the facility.
Yes. But with the liabilities involved, nobody wants to open a homeless shelter. Because the insurance alone, I mean, imagine if someone were to get raped or murdered in, in your facility, if you had the facility. It's just, it's just gonna be terrible. I mean, and this judgment we just got against the county, I mean, the same thing could happen to a homeless shelter. And I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong, they're gonna, but we need to do something. We need to move forward and get past this and, you know, I understand the position that you guys are in. But, you know, from a citizen's standpoint, we need to do something. It's not gonna get any better if we don't try something. Even if it's not right, we gotta try something.
I agree, Darrell. Thank you very much for the comments. Anybody else, okay?
I'm, I'm with Oklahoma. And the reason why I'm
Can you stand up?
I'm gonna address this real quick. Because the reason there were people in there is because when my dad died and I got it, I wanted to open a business in it and the city wouldn't let me. But I had all that
Okay, ma'am, do you have a question?
I was gonna answer your question real quick. Because I need to be taken, the whole town's talking about my car lot. And I know they are. That's why I'm here, can't hear her. So I need to be addressed because I had a ton of people there. And they wouldn't let me have business. Everybody was robbing it. I couldn't stay up there, they'd tell me to leave. Finally, I said, you know what? Forget it. You want me to help me?
Marcy, drop the microphone.
So I let people go in there and watch it for me. And I did, until the boy, that guy, he took the gun. And I looked at him, gun to my head. And I realized that they had drugs in there. And I told them, no drugs are in my building. And all of them are gone. And the only way to go there now is if they're my friends, they're robbing it. There's no one in there. But anyways,
I was only by there at two thirty in the morning, the other morning.
Okay. They've been told there's no way to be there. It was locked down and everything. Okay, they were told there was nobody, that it was locked down and everything. So for me to ask the police department to watch it for me, or to try to help me, because I can't be everywhere, and they don't want me up there either, what am I supposed to do? There's nothing can do, so that's what is done here. But I can't have the cops out and watch up, and I thought there were three thousand dollars of stuff in there, because they thought it was a police report. Because I wanted to open a business there, and the city said I couldn't because they had flood. So I told them, we'll do all the stuff, they're, but those homeless people aren't all drugies, and it isn't all drugies that are robbing us. So all drugies are not always the bad ones. Those bad ones stay here.
Well, that's between you and the city, it's not...
No, I'm talking about you calling, all the menheads, all the men, it's not all these menheads.
Okay, can we move on? I appreciate it.
Anyways, yes, my question is, what do I do for that? Do I just try to do, I've got a question, one, one here. What do I do to try to get, I see the voice there, without it happening like...
As, you know, my guys, as a non, non-law enforcement agent, um, I think this is very simple, because that building's flooded several times, I believe.
Yeah, it did, it did.
Hold on. But to use that building now, it's, it's, I believe it's condemned.
How can a brick building be condemned?
Because it's been flooded, ma'am.
Tell me that one, right there.
My advice would be to tear it down.
Well, I'm not speaking, but I am so...
But I'm just saying, you want to, you want to fix the problem, there's a solution, is to tear it down. There's nothing will be allowed back in here again.
There's next door, they're flooded, too.
They're active right now.
The city picket, who's...
Uh, okay, thank you. I appreciate your time. Uh, who's next?
We're not tearing the building down.
My name is Kay Russell. I live at one-seventeen North Flank, Commerce, Oklahoma.
Can't hear.
Can you hear me now?
I think so.
No. Again, my name is Kay Russell. I live at one-seventeen North Flank, Commerce, Oklahoma. And February the fourteenth of this year, I was involved in a house fire. And we were in bed asleep, everybody else was out on the block, um, and pray the Lord for the Kwapaw Fire Department, because they were the first ones to show up, then the Miami Fire Department, and then the Commerce Fire Department. And also, I have made many complaints on this resident next door to me that are to the ground, and I have made numerous reports on this house next door. And I go up and I ask for my report, because I'd like a copy of it. Oh, we don't have it anymore. Well, why not? Well, we just don't. Then, at one time, I made a seven-page report that I was totally dishonored, disgraced by a city employee, and the chief was sitting right there, not this one, the former one, sitting right there, listening to the whole thing, never said a word. So I said, okay, I'm going to make the report word for word, which I did. Then I took it back in the next day for him to sign, and he refused to sign it. Ernie's not a signer, that's the, Ernie, the witness of this, you did. Then he pulls out his next drawer, pulls out a sheet of paper, and says, Kay, I made my own report. And, and I basically said, okay, in other words, you're telling me my report means nothing to me much. And then with this house fire, any kind of domestic problems or anything else, we have to call the Miami PD. To even get a Commerce Police Officer to read, you know, come out and investigate that thing. So I want to pray the Lord for the Kwapaw Marshal Department, because every time I get a call, I call Miami, and they ask me if I'm a tribal member, and I say, yes, I am, I want a marshal, Kwapaw Marshal. And they come right out and they take care of business. Isaac North is a wonderful individual. He's helped me out twice. And this house next door to us, my husband and I, has been condemned, but there for a while, these people were allowed to go back in there and get whatever they wanted. But there's this condemned sign on there. And I told the city manager and the code enforcer, if you're not coming to enforce your city ordinance, just take those things down. Now, I, like I said, I'm really furious, because this fire cost me fifteen thousand dollars with my insurance out of my own pocket. This individual had no insurance, they're not doing anything with her. So I just wanted to tell you, I admire the Kwapaw Marshals for taking out, and the Fire Department. Like I said, they were the first ones there. In fact, they were the ones that told us to get out of our house. The people next door, there was eight of them in there, and not one of them came over and knocked on my door and telling me their house was on fire. And I, I get really upset about this, because it, you know, we could have lost our lives in this, but nothing is being done. And, and I've been told, oh, it could take up to three years for that house to be torn down. And I'm thinking, why? Again, it's this thing, no money. Then I found out that the code enforcement's under the Police Department, which that means nobody can, because it all goes to the Police Department.
Uh, actually, that's not true. He is under my department, but his money and my money's completely separate. I don't have anything at all to do with his money. He's only allowed about three thousand a year to tear down houses, and we've got numerous in the town that are to be torn down, but understand this, I have absolutely nothing to do with his money. That's between him and Michael Harp and not me.
Well, I'm just informed, Kay.
You were informed wrong.
So can I address that with an individual?
I have absolutely nothing to do with his money.
Well, you know, it's kind of like I've talked to Michael about that, too, you know? And it's so nonchalant, like, you know, right now I'm getting cockroaches, I'm getting mice, and I've never had that problem. And, oh, the grass in the backyard is taller than I am, the side on the south is up past my waist, and yet I just hope there would be nothing done to plead anything of until September. Again, I've got to deal with all of this, and I've called BEQ, because it's right across the street from a head start. You know, it's, it's a hazard, health hazard. And I've called my state representative, I've gotten no response there, because it's kind of like a bell through the hole, gray hole. Again, I've got to deal with it, the whole neighborhood's got to deal with it, because, like I said, head starts right across the street.
But you've got to understand, okay, you've had five other houses before that one was burnt down, and so I've got to tear it down. I mean, you're on that list.
Oh, I know.
But it just takes, I want very little funding, there's not much we can do, so we get money.
A lot of people give the county the terrible amount.
The county is helping us some, by some of them, but again, it's...
You might have to contact your county commissioner, maybe.
Well, I have a question. Was there not a house on, is it, is it...
Second Street that Kwapaw turned, or... I have no idea, I, I don't deal with the house down there.
Well, again, I'm addressing you, as a tribal member, now, I'm not Kwapaw, I'm on the Miami Nation, but I just wanted you to know that I appreciate you for being there for that, that night. It was a horrible night for me, because I was standing there watching my house burn. And I just thank you and Kwapaw Fire Department, and I would have to address the Fire Department and make it aware I appreciated them for everything that they did, because they were the first ones on the scene, and the Marshals were the first ones on the scene. Thank you.
I want to thank you for those compliments, and I will let the staff know, and just so everybody knows, the Kwapaw Nation, uh, since I've been there, you know, seeing all the things that the tribe does for the community, just so folks know that millions of dollars that they're putting into public safety, the tribe is doing that out of the tribe's general funds. It's not, I get very little money from the federal government for law enforcement, we don't get any federal money for our, our department or anything else. So I had to give some, uh, kudos to the tribe for all the money that they put in, because it doesn't only just affect the Kwapaw Nation and the folks within the boundaries. We, we do fire services, EMS services, and actually, the, the Marshals help outside of the Kwapaw Nation Reservation. So thank you for those comments, and, and that's what we're here for. We love all of our citizens in Commerce, Kwapaw, all in the reservation in Ottawa County, and the tribe is here to help in those areas. So if there is things that you folks, just kind of like what we talked about with the city of Miami, if there's something that's, you know, that you want to address with the tribe, I would definitely ask, because there is resources for them, to be able to do something to help in those areas. We've got a very good business committee, uh, that's very proactive, so absolutely ask those questions.
I have met some of your members on your business committee, and they are wonderful people.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. Okay, anybody else? Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, sir. Are there any plans of bringing, uh, getting the Citizens Academy going again?
Uh, yes, we do have, have talked about it. We ran Citizens Cad for several years, uh, through the couple of years we gave up, we, in the last couple of years, we had lower participation. We have had several inquiries, uh, people asking about it, so it is something we want to do, and it's a great, uh, way for citizens to get involved in PD and citizen grades. We ran it, uh, I think about ten weeks prior, and once we, Citizens came out, got to do ride-alongs, learn different parts of what we do, and if that was something we want to continue, we just haven't gotten that started yet.
Any, uh, follow-up question? Do you have a timeframe in mind?
I hope to, uh, probably next year, probably.
And, uh, since, since it was brought up, the Ellis case, what was the timeline at which the blanket was wrapped around his neck?
I got my brother up.
Thank you.
Ooh, I forgot something. Did I bring up, uh, when he was getting CPR and ambulance, the nurse was in there talking about that? Okay. Because it was mentioned that there was a, not a blanket, it was a towel, and, uh, it was mentioned, hey, was that towel wrapped around his neck? And the judge said, hell no, it was laid on his, uh, chest. So there was some discussion there from someone talking about a possible suicide. I hope that answers your question.
I know you got one as well. Yeah. Actually, the Ellis case, they sold, they sold, not even... Where's your glove?
For, uh, these, uh, third days, I've been told that, I can not believe this...
Here, hold on my shoulder.
You got, it plays very easy, and, and he was, uh, on this Ellis video, that he was, uh, he was very complicated, wasn't he? And my first question was, how old is this boy? I want to say he was twenty-five. Okay, no problem. Now, his past history, how many times have you been at a risk for something, yes, doing something bad all the time? Was it maybe, was he just have to...
It might have been.
See, that's, I know a kid that's been in there, I don't know if he's had all of them going through, and if he might have been through them, and you're right, they need the hammer, uh, like, they need to use the hammer...
Let him hold your camera before you break it, okay?
...that was bad, that mentally disturbed, and, uh, was being pulled, or something, and he had police weapons, or someone was put up the, the, the... It was beautiful, as you just talked about, the fox, and the... Fox, to the step, of downstream, and police, did he just kind of have a day with his last year, I'd say, I'd say three days.
Oh, he's the one that got some help.
And when is it?
A month ago. Unless he got another one, but I don't know about him.
Well, I saw him all the way back on the corner, I, I went to the tracks.
That entire city's been back about a couple of days.
Yeah. See, I saw, I think it was laying there, and they was, uh, been there quite a while, resident down low, it was working in here, and the house, and, uh, then, uh, this kid has been walking by my house a lot, and he's very intelligent, but he won't do the same as in another word, but you know that he should be helped for life. Yeah. But anyway, uh, he needed to do his stuff, but it was in that, anyway, I had to go up there and see what was, and, oh, God, he was, and, uh, he was on his, into his, like, a, and, uh, I asked him, what's he doing, I'm trying to find the class, and it's a hundred percent of the current, okay? And so, I swear to God, we got to see if he just had a video, this is something to save the yard, and he brought that ass, tried to set one hand in his hands, and we didn't actually, but, uh, uh, uh...
Well, he's looking very patient, thank you.